Ladies and gentlemen, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Havreford Township. Today is July 8, 2024. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak, present. Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Here.
Commissioner Cavender?
Here.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Present.
Commissioner McCollum?
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Chief, would you lead us? I have two announcements. Our first announcement is that our Board of Commissioners met on June 27 in the evening in an executive session to discuss legal matters. My other announcement is that we have with us this evening an invited guest, Rebecca Yerkovich, who is the Sustainability and Resilience Manager of Delaware County's Office of Sustainability, who would like to speak with us about our township's designation as Delaware County's Sustainable Organization of the Year. Ms. Yerkovich, welcome. Is the, uh...
Is that green light on?
Is the green light on?
So, as noted, my name is Rebecca Yerkovich. I'm the Sustainability and Resilience Manager for Delaware County. In 2021, the Office of Sustainability was created to make county operations, as well as our community, more sustainable. Or in other words, to create and maintain the conditions under which our residents and nature can exist in productive harmony to support the present and future generations in our changing climate. To support this task, in August of 2023, Delaware County adopted its first-ever sustainability plan. The plan traverses six focus areas, including climate resilience, natural resources, energy inefficiencies, transportation, zero waste, and health and wellness. This plan not only identifies the existing conditions of the county, but it also serves to set goals, targets, and actions for our future. While the county has a long way to go in its journey for sustainability, it is important to recognize that many successes have already occurred within our community. To recognize these successes, Delaware County has issued sustainability awards each year at the annual Sustainability Conference. This year, awards were issued to six different individuals and organizations, recognizing their leadership and sustainability in resilience practices. And I am very happy to share Havreford Township not only was designated with its own award, but you guys swept the categories with two residents also winning awards, two of which are here today. I'm here to embarrass them. So first, Pete Puglianesi won our Sustainability Hero Award, just recognizing all the tremendous work and leadership he is doing. He's pretty much on every board and is in every single meeting for anything sustainability-related. So we're very pleased to have him as our Sustainability Hero. And we're also pleased to issue the Sustainable Project of the Year to Sam Krakow in the back for his heat pump education initiative, which many of you have probably seen during a webinar series about the importance of switching to heat pumps. But here today, I'm here to recognize Havreford Township as the Sustainable Organization of the Year. Havreford has served as a model community, expressing its dedication and sustainability through its 2021 Climate Action Plan, Sustain Delco or Sustain PA Gold Certification, alternative fuel adoption, and for its outstanding Beyond the Blue Bin Initiative. Havreford is not only leading by example, but is also forging a new path by taking risks and implementing innovative new programs, such as your glass collection program, repairing buffers, and your bag ban. Delaware County would like to commend Havreford Township Commissioners, staff, and members of the EAC, including Melissa Romano, Victor Barksey, Henry Aikman, Pete Puglianesi, Joy Baxter, Noel Smith, Hank Schwab, Rob Graff, and Amanda Camacho for their tremendous commitment to Sustain Delco. So on behalf of Delaware County, congratulations. I would like to present to you a certificate, and I'm also happy to share a tree has been planted in your honor in William Penn Park in Chester City. And it's designated with a plaque if you want to go see your tree.
Ah, wonderful. Thank you so much. Should we get a photograph of everybody?
Sure.
Ron?
Good.
Oh, thank you.
EAC.
Thank you. Ms. Yerkovich, stay.
EAC.
With the EAC. First, what do you want to do?
Congratulations.
We're including our friends that helped too, not just the appointed people.
Thank you if you would stand in the center. If you put them all around her.
I'll take one too.
I'm going to be official without her.
And then we'll get one after one. It says, "Sustainability." Don't want me to say it.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Everybody else, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks all. That was an enjoyable part of our meeting. The next item on our agenda is the Citizens Forum, obviously the part where folks register in advance to speak on any topic they would like, or folks in the audience this evening can get up as the spirit moves them and speak on an item on the agenda. Anybody who didn't register or doesn't speak on an agenda item is free to speak later in the meeting when we come back around to this issue. So I can report that I have no registered speakers tonight for this meeting. And so the floor opens to the, um, those citizens who would like to speak on an agenda item this evening. As always, I will start on my left. Anybody over here want to speak on an agenda item? And to my right. That would conclude our Citizens Forum for the evening. The next item on our agenda is the Bureau of Fire update.
Thank you. Havreford Township Bureau of Fire report for June of 2024. Total incidences, number 97, 71 township incidents and 26 out-of-t township mutual aid incidents. The average personnel per call was 19. This included 1,000, uh, we had 1,795 personnel hours committed to incidents and 752 personnel hours committed to training. Our Bureau of Fire provided mutual aid to nine working fires within Delaware County this month. And that's the report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gondak. Any questions or comments for Brian? I'm hearing none. The next item on our agenda is the always entertaining Township Auditor Update, although, um, uh, the Clown Principal Auditing is not here tonight. Is there anybody who is going to be providing a report in his stead? I trust Ms. Cuthbertson that any questions he had for you, you answered to his satisfaction?
I did, and he will be stopping by on Friday. I believe he's out of town right now, which is why he's not here at our meeting, but he will be coming on Friday to review invoices that he selected.
Excellent. Thank you for that information and hope he has a good trip and safe travels. Our next item is our Township Manager update. So, Mr. Berman?
Thank you. This evening, I'd like to provide a brief update on the ward redistricting process. We've talked about this over the last several months. The Pennsylvania Constitution does require local governing bodies that are elected by districts, such as this Board of Commissioners, to examine their district lines after each decennial census, so after the 2020 census. The procedure is set forth in the Municipal Reapportionment Act, and we've been working closely with the Commissioners Redistricting Committee, consisting of Commissioner Cavender, McCollum, Gondak, and the Chair, Commissioner Forstie Grubb. So we all know there are nine wards here in Havreford Township, and as of the 2020 census, the total population was 50,430. With nine wards, the average is 5,603 residents in each ward. So as a general rule of thumb, no ward should deviate by more than 10% from the average population of the municipality. So with a population of 6,198, Ward Four deviates above the average by about 10.6%. So this raises some concerns and likely requires reapportionment. Because Ward Three has the largest deviation below the average, it becomes an obvious candidate for reapportionment. So you may recall that we, the township engaged CH Planning to perform the data collection and analysis for this project, and they prepared a short report summarizing their findings. That's been on the website for several months now. They presented three options for consideration by the board. All three options would include that reapportionment of a small portion of Ward Four over to Ward Three. So based on the CH Planning report, all three approaches would result in contiguous wards after the redrawing of boundaries. None of the three approaches would violate the Voting Rights Act, and none of the three approaches would have a substantial impact on election outcomes. So the three options, these maps were placed on our website as well. This is what option one looks like on a map. It's, uh, it would relocate about 425 people from Ward Four to Ward Three. And I want to be clear that we sent letters to every property owner who might be affected by this redistricting. So regardless of where they lived in the ward, if they were in any of the areas that might be affected, we sent them a letter. We informed them, we informed them about the matter, and we asked for their input. We also sent broadcast messages to our entire email list via Constant Contact. I know Commissioner Communications went out, and we dedicated an entire page on our website to this project. So again, moving forward, this map shows that option one would relocate seven census blocks from Ward Four to Ward Three, and again, that's 425 people. Option two, if selected, would relocate four census blocks with 336 residents from Ward Four to Ward Three. And option three would relocate 239 people. That's four census blocks from Ward Four to Ward Three. So we prepared a chart for the board to review, for the residents to review. The chart shows the current scenario, the current total in each ward, and the deviation from the average, and it shows each of the three options and the resulting statistics. The report from CH Planning notes that with the objective of achieving the highest level of contiguity while minimizing population deviation across all wards, that firm recommended option one. And that proposal would result in a 3% deviation for Ward Four and just a 1% deviation for Ward Three. So in addition to publishing that on the website and sending out letters, we did seek public input. We did receive 151 responses to our survey, and the vast majority of those favored either option one or they had no preference. There were 15 comments, and we dealt with those directly to the best of our ability. So I'm going to discuss this further in detail with Commissioners Redistricting Committee, but at this point, we're planning to take the next steps with regard to option one. And that would be coordinating with the County Bureau of Elections. Since they would need to amend their election and voter maps, we'd work with the Township Engineer to prepare new legal descriptions for the wards Four and Three. We'd work with the Township Solicitor to amend Chapter 37 of the General Laws of Havreford Township titled Wards and Precincts. And when it's all done, we'd come back to the Board of Commissioners, where you could consider any of the proposed changes, and there would be the ordinance amendment process. And so that's all I have this evening.
Thank you for that very informative presentation on, uh, on redistricting. I think I'm the only person on the board. But Chief Viola remembers the catastrophic redistricting that took place 20 years ago before I was on this board. So it is nice to see something very well thought out and, uh, and, and let's say geographic and, uh, and done geometric, I should say, and, and done with a nonpartisan goal in mind. So congratulate the group that did the work for us, Mr. Berman, and thank you for your work and your presentation. And we will look forward to, uh, reviewing comments from the redistricting committee and ultimately considering and hopefully adopting an ordinance.
I'd like to ask one question of clarification. Given all the next steps that you outlined, I assume that this redistricting would not take effect until well after the election in November?
That, that would be correct. I think it's safe to assume that with the timelines that have to be met, it wouldn't be in time for that and the proper notice before the election.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments or thoughts or suggestions? Hearing none. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. I will, uh, we will entertain a motion.
I make a mo- mo- motion to adopt the meeting minutes of June 10.
We have a second?
Ten.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments, deletions, additions?
Correction.
Yeah?
I was not here last month, but I'm listed as voting on all the votes, so.
Well, good point. All right, let's, uh, let's take Commissioner Hart out. I'm sure everybody was prepared to make that suggestion as well before he jumped on it. Any other questions or comments or glaring omissions or mistakes in the minutes that I should be aware of? Okay, do you accept the minutes as changed, Commissioner Quinn?
Yes, I do.
And was it Commissioner Trombetta who seconded?
Yes, I do.
Do you accept the changes as, um, motion as amended?
Yes.
Okay, so we're considering amended motion to adopt the minutes, subtracting the, um, uh, votes of Commissioner Hart and noting instead at the beginning his absence. No, it does note that he was absent. So, uh, go ahead and call the vote.
Commissioner Gondak? Yes? Commissioner Gondak, Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey? Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Abstain.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is our approval of warrants.
Motion to approve the following warrant, number 7, 2024, totaling $7,477,611.28. General and sewer fund payroll for June 20, 2024 in the amount of $826,634.21. General and sewer fund payroll for July 3, 2024 in the amount of $794,286.11. General fund disbursements, number 7, 2024, in the amount of $3,188,972.87. Sewer fund disbursements, number 7, 2024, in the amount of $228,930.28. Community development block grant fund disbursement, number 7, 2024, in the amount of $89,280.56. Capital projects fund disbursement, number 7, 2024, in the amount of $1,767,755.38. American Rescue Plan Fund, number 7, 2024, in the amount of $560,870.7. Credit card statement ending June 27, 2024 in the amount of $20,881.80.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? Any questions or comments? Sorry, we have a motion in a second? Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next item for our consideration is, we now move to ordinances. Our next item is ordinance number P9 of 2024, amending Chapter 130, Peddling and Soliciting, second reading.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P9, 2024, amending Chapter 130, Peddling and Soliciting to establish permitted hours for commercial solicitation between 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM between October 1 and March 31, and between 9:00 AM and 8:00 PM between April 1 and September 30 to require an FBI background check for applicants and to codify a do-not-solicit registry. Second.
We have a motion in a second? Any questions or comments on this ordinance? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next ordinance for our consideration is ordinance number P10 of 2024. This is a traffic ordinance, and it is our second reading.
Mr. President?
Uh, Commissioner Trombetta?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P10, 2024, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Special purpose parking zones in front of 100 Lincoln Avenue and in front of 18 Broadman Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? Any questions or comments?
Just to clarify, in the, the header, it indicates second reading, which I believe is accurate, but in the body of the motion, it says first reading. Is this, this is in fact a second reading, correct?
Fair question. Let me quickly look at the minutes. Yeah, P10, 2024 was adopted last, last month.
Thank you for clarifying. We don't, we don't need to amend anything, correct?
We do not. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is for us to consider the authorization of the placement of traffic calming devices, particularly speed humps on Rugby Road.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize installation of speed humps the entire length of Rugby Road. Hang on one second. The computer. The entire, thank you. The entire length of Rugby Road, Bryn Mawr, PA. Rugby Road qualifies for temporary speed bumps for the 2024 season to be removed no later than 12/1/24. Second.
Uh, we have a motion in a second? Any questions or comments on this?
Uh, I have a question, um, for Chief Viola. So the, these are temporary speed humps. Do, do the residents have to reapply for speed humps every year? Or will they automatically go back after the winter?
I think history shows that once they're up for one season, they don't go back again because of the complaints about the noise of them. So we have not, we have not reinstalled any speed bumps. We had one ward where there was quite an outcry about putting them back, and, and they did go back, and the commissioner had to deal with that issue there.
Thank you.
And Chief, is it always, let's say, they did want them back? It would be a temporary every year that we're not?
It would be temporary every year, and I think at some point, we're going to have to have some discussion with the engineer and, and the Commissioners to see how we're going to move forward. But the history of these are, once they're placed, people are not happy with them.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief, what are the qualifications? I, I know that it requires, um, a certain percentage of, um, of resident approval. Are there also, um, uh, traffic studies or other, other milestones that need to be met?
The first request comes in through a petition signed by 80% of the residents on that block or that street. Then we have to do a traffic study. Do you want to go a little further with that? There's, there's a traffic study in terms of 85th percentile of speed, which the police monitor and establish themselves. And it's all based on the state of Pennsylvania's traffic and calming ordinance, which we adopted 15 years ago and then modified at least once. Then there's physical constraints, drainage, driveways, horizontal curves, vertical curves. So you, you have to take those into consideration when you place them. And, and it, the, then there's the, and I think it's a reason for the December removal. There's snow removal issues with the temporary ones. I think we only have permanent speed humps in two places, Steel Road and Hot, not Highland. Right next, yeah, Highland adjacent to the church. There's two on Highland Avenue adjacent to the church, and there's two on Steel Road.
Golf course.
The golf course, which are not near any adjacent residential properties nor, um, any driveways. The two on Highland have residential properties across the street. And the, I don't know if anybody on the Board remembers. I know the chief does. When they were built the first time, they were a little problematic. We had to take them out and redo them again. And had to rebuild them.
I have a question. I, I've been asked this a lot of times. Panmere Road has them, and I'm not sure, I just, I always get asked what the history of us is of having permanent speed bumps. What, what is the history of that?
That was a negotiated process there for other issues that were happening in that direct neighborhood.
Thanks.
Well, well, I get asked a lot about this stuff, and, and, and I think everybody who wants these things, I often hear, well, I want, want, want this on my street, but I don't want it in front of mine.
Hundred percent correct. The special operations officers go out there and start marking the street. Neighbors are out there, no, don't put it there, put it somewhere else.
But they'll all sign, they sign it, but they just don't, don't want it there.
It doesn't work that way.
Well, it was in front of mine, and, and I can tell you that every bad thing people say about them is true, although it does alter people's behavior. It, it scares people off the streets in terms of, you know, using it as cut through. I think their effects even last beyond the speed bumps being removed. I, um, so I, I do. Is there, in addition to that speed issue, is there also a volume issue? Does there have to be a certain level of volume?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and I know that, and I ask this, and I ask this in the public because, um, because there is a lot of disinformation, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of demand for these, for folks who've never lived on the street that, that have them. There's also the perception for everybody on any street that everyone is flying down the streets and that millions of cars going by. It is always useful for any of my colleagues here who are getting requests from neighborhoods about, um... Um, for any of my colleagues here who are getting requests from neighborhoods about, um, about traffic calming devices. Um, to have the, 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 the speed study, um, and the volume study performed, um, because it's informative. Um, it's informative for our PD and it's very informative, um, for each of us, um, in, in speaking with, um, our constituents about the issue. Um, I was sure cars were going a hundred and seventy-two miles an hour down my street and they frankly, uh, weren't. Um, and, uh, but it's, it is good to see the actual data, the actual analysis, the number of cars that go, the directions they're going, the times of the day. And, you know, not only the average speed, um, but it actually gives you specific data about how many cars did go over twenty-five or over thirty or over thirty-five. Um, so thanks for that, Chief.
On, on the agenda tonight, there's, uh, additional equipment going to be purchased for more counting devices, uh, because we have so many requests for them. And besides the counting devices, there are the, uh, the movable, uh, speed signs that we put in different streets until somebody complains about them.
Uh, any other questions or comments, uh, on our, um, authorization to install the speed humps? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
No.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
No.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Um, next item on our agenda, ordinance P eleven of two thousand twenty four, a lease agreement with the county of Delaware, Pennsylvania. And, uh, it is a first reading. Uh, motion to, anybody?
Mr. President, motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number, uh, P eleven, two thousand twenty four. Authorizing a lease with the county of Delaware for a hundred and sixty square foot portion of ground. Adjacent to the communication tower at twenty-three, twenty-five Darby Road for county emergency communication equipment.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any, um, questions or comments on this, uh, lease agreement? Um.
Uh, two.
I wouldn't mind a quick explanation. What is that, forty by forty?
As what, what is the actual equipment for?
Forty by four, what is that?
So I'll kind of give you a little history, what the project's about.
Sure.
A few minutes. So all the radio equipment for Delaware County is housed in the, uh, base of the old township building. Fire, police, EMS, public works and our alternate channels. Uh, two thousand nine, we switched from, uh, the self dispatch here at Haverford Township to the Delaware County Emergency Service. And at that time, the county took over all of our radio maintenance, our, uh, uh, dispatch radios. Um, in two thousand nineteen, uh, Delaware County asked, uh, to form a committee, uh, with police, fire, EMS. To come up with a plan, uh, and a selection process for radio vendors with the expectation of hopefully, uh, updating the radio system. Now, we, we, Delaware County are the last that use the, uh, lower frequency channels. And it's been a huge problem with people hacking on their radios and, and interfering, uh, during serious calls. Uh, so if there are much, much, uh, depth and research by Delaware County, they committed thirty-eight million dollars to replace, um, of the radio infrastructure. Uh, because of that commitment, a new radio shelter is needed at the property of twenty-three, twenty-five Darby Road. This will allow the county to move all of the radio equipment from the township, uh, building, which is damp down there. We've had problems in the past because of it. Uh, to the new shelter next to the township building, which is right next to the tower at no cost to the township. Uh, the radio site location is extremely important. It serves Haverford, Radnor Township, uh, for emergency services, uh, for, uh, dispatch and re, receiving. It will have minimal impact on the property because it's right next to the tower and it's just really not taking any room or any parking spaces. So I believe that Mr. Walker's been heavily involved in the discussion and the contract, uh, language. And I think at this point, the county may have already signed it, uh, just waiting for us. And it's critical that we move forward because we're at that point now where, um, things, uh, have to start happening as far as the actual work.
Thank you for that explanation, Chief. Uh, any other questions or comments?
Chief, I, I do have a question. You know, in terms of the fact that it's the old, the old township building, I mean, right now it's being temporarily used, but there really is no. Plan or, I'm not even aware of discussions for plans for the, the future of that building. Well, is there a specific reason why that equipment was left there? Like in other words, the, the box is going to be built, you, the proposal is to build a box there. Is there a reason why it's there as opposed to being relocated here to the current township building, police department?
As of the tower usage, that tower is the highest point in Haverford Township and it serves all of Radnor Township, all of Haverford Township. And when there's a, a breakdown in radio communications, they switch other sectors, police sectors and fire channels onto that. So it's very critical that has to be next to the tower.
Okay, so that's, it's connected to the tower.
We don't have that equipment here on the township building, this current township building.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, hearing none. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
No.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Um. Next item on our agenda, resolution number twenty-three eighty-six of twenty twenty-four, um, ARPA Bailey Park sanitary sewer replacement.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-three eighty-six dash twenty twenty-four. That the Board of Commissioners desires to make improvements and financial investments in township projects and initiatives. In accordance with the allowable spending structure as described by the U.S. Department of Treasury's final rule as follows. Bailey Park sanitary sewer replacement in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, which will represent the required match. And any other eligible project costs not covered by the twenty twenty-four COVID-nineteen ARPA Pennsylvania Small Water Sewer Grant. Awarded to Haverford Township in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments about this, uh, project? Uh, hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next item for our consideration is resolution number twenty-three eighty-seven of twenty twenty-four, also relates to the, uh, ARPA. Uh, Parks and Recreation, the Brookline Park, uh, playground equipment.
Mr. President, motion to adopt resolution twenty-three eighty-seven, twenty twenty-four. That the Board of Commissioners desires to make improvements and financial investments in several township projects and initiatives. In accordance with the allowable spending structure as described by the U.S. Department of Treasury's final rule as follows. Communication boards for three parks, three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Landscape structures incorporated, large composite for Brookline Park, one hundred and four thousand and seventy-five dollars. Installation for landscape structure incorporated, composite for Brookline Park, thirty-nine thousand two hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments about this? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
No.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
No. Uh, resolution twenty-three eighty-eight of twenty twenty-four, also ARPA Bureau of Fire. Um, this is, uh, the Bureau of Fire is, uh, for air packs, uh, police department, body camera recording systems and car camera recording systems. Um, so one resolution covering, uh, two departments and, uh, multiple purchases.
Uh, Mr. President, I have motion to adopt the resolution number twenty-three eighty-eight of two thousand twenty-four. That the Board of Commissioners desires to make improvements and financial investments in several township projects and initiatives. In accordance with the allowable spending structure as described by the U.S. Department of Treasury's final rule as follows. Purchase of forty-eight Scott air packs for Haverford Township Bureau of Fire. Total cost, four hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and five cents. Purchase of forty-five new Motorola WatchGuard Police Body Camera Recording Systems V seven hundred. For a cost, total cost of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And per, uh, purchase of twenty-six new Motorola WatchGuard Police in-car mobile recording systems. For a total purchase cost of two hundred thousand dollars.
Second. Uh, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on these, uh, purchases?
Just a question, are the air packs, are they replacements or are they just new ones?
Replacements.
Thank you.
Uh, okay. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Uh, hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Uh, we now move to contract awards and purchases. The first, uh, one for our consideration is from the Public Works Department.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion to enter into a one-year purchase agreement with petroleum traders submitting the lowest responsible, responsible bid. In the amount of two dollars point four one five point eight transport cost and two dollars point five six seven one, um, tank wagon cost.
Second.
Somebody want to explain that? Is there an extra dot in there somewhere?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Cuthbertson.
There is a typo in that, so it should read, uh, two point four one five eight and two point five six seven one.
And what is that? What does that reflect?
This is the price of gas. So we do a public bid each year, uh, the, uh, Public Works Department. Um, since it's all market driven, we, we bid it as a point in time with what they're really, uh, competing against each other is a fixed differential, the overhead or the transport costs. So, um, petroleum traders is our current provider and, uh, they were the bidder this year that we're going to, uh, propose to stay with.
Uh, thank you.
Change from last year?
The price changes daily, just like our gas changes daily. So really the, the only part they're truly bidding on is called a fixed differential and how they get it to us.
Okay, I appreciate that, uh, explanation. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Um, hearing none, and we will make sure the, uh, agenda is corrected for the future. Uh, Mr. Berman, call the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Um, also Public Works, we have another, uh, contract to consider.
Mr. President, motion to award the Bailey Park sanitary sewer replacement contract to A. Garjul and Sons Incorporated. In the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second. Uh, my compliments. Uh, years ago, I butchered that name, um, and, uh, Commissioner D'Amelio, uh, corrected me in front of the world. Um, so, uh, good job, Commissioner Forsti Grubb. Uh, any questions or comments on the, uh, on, on this award? Hearing none.
Uh, Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Uh, the next, uh, next contract for our consideration, um, is, uh, with regard to the fire companies. Um, our agenda says fire companies and police department, but Chief, I'm assuming the forty-eight Scott air packs are simply for the Department of Fire?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, the next, uh, our next contract is for consideration, um, uh, for the fire companies. Uh, I will entertain a motion.
Uh, motion to authorize the purchase of forty-eight Scott air packs for Haverford Township Bureau of Fire. From Municipal Emergency Services under Co-Stars Contract zero one two dash E two three dash three three seven. In the amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and five cents.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments about these?
I, I would just comment that it, it, obviously it's a, it's a large number, um, but, uh, these air packs are replacing existing air packs. Uh, the air packs themselves do have kind of a defined life, um, in terms of number of years. And the air packs that we've been using, uh, in the township are, are coming to the end of their, uh, their expected life. Uh, and these packs are being, uh, portioned out to all five of the fire companies.
Correctly, that's called the three fire companies. The other two fire companies have received grants, uh, last year to buy them. So, uh, and, and, uh, we were able to lower the price for these. Uh, Brookline got a grant for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for that also. But these have reached their life, end of life expectancy this year.
Thank you for clarifying that, Chief.
Are in and they are in service now.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Um, thank you, Commissioner Gondak. Any other questions or comments? Okay, uh, hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Um, next, uh, contract award is, uh, for the police department.
Motion to authorize the purchase of forty-five new Motorola WatchGuard Police Body Camera Recording System V seven hundreds. In the amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Sourcewell contract one zero one two two three dash MOT. And twenty-six new Motorola WatchGuard Police in-car mobile recording systems in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Sourcewell contract one zero one two two three dash MOT.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or, um, comments? Actually, I do. Are the, are these also upgrades or replacements?
Replacements. They've reached the end of their life also. Uh, the firmware, like everything else, is tech, technical. Uh, they don't support it anymore. Uh, keep in mind that when we bought these in two thousand seventeen, uh, they have doubled in price, uh, since, uh, because of. More technical issues with them, better quality and, and I think you have seen that we have used them extensively, uh, on complaints. Uh, and or, um, road stops or pursuits or any other interaction with the public. They're an extremely valuable tool for the police department and the township.
Chief.
Thank you.
Chief, with this purchase, will all officers who are on the street have a body cam?
That's correct, Commissioner. That's why they, we doubled the amount, uh, when the officers were on the street, they have a fresh body camera and the other half are charging. So when the next, uh, uh, squad comes in, uh, shift, uh, they get fresh, um, cameras. So the cars are fixed, uh, the body cameras, they replace them at the end of their shift and put them in the charger. They're downloaded automatically and then, uh, they, the new shift takes the, the fresh cameras out.
Thank you.
Any, um, uh, any other questions or comments? Thank you for that information, Chief. Um, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Um. We have a motion, uh, to consider a contract for the scadium.
Motion to approve professional services contract with CB Development Inc., Philadelphia, PA. For construction management services related to the scadium locker room renovation project in an amount, in the amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? I, this is probably just as good a time for, um, uh, uh, for our finance director to, um, describe to us the current state of the project with the scadium. And maybe give a quick explanation about the locker room.
Sure. Uh, my computer just died, so, uh, I'm going to go from memory, so hopefully I can, uh, remember all the good details.
So it's that big building right across the parking lot?
It is. The one that's been closed of the public remembers and the commissioners. We've been closed since May fifteenth for a planned shutdown. Um, to replace a, a couple of the truly essential systems, meaning, uh, the chillers, the cooling towers, uh, began earlier in the year. But we were finishing up the cooling towers, water pumps, the whole ice surface was defrosted and, um, and melted. And then build it all back up. So that is what has been happening since the fifteenth of May. Uh, last week was a big week in particular, um, the chillers. Uh, last week was a big week in particular. Um, the chillers, we have tried to keep the public up to date on social media, but last week the chillers, uh, were tested to make sure everything was talking with each other. We were able to incorporate a few of the recommendations from the energy audit, uh, specifically the, the VFDs, the, uh, variable frequency devices that help with the motor coordination, uh, the high-efficiency chillers, the high-efficiency cooling towers. So last week was very important with everything being tested to make sure it all communicated, which it successfully did. This morning was another big step, uh, where everything was turned on all at once to make sure short it out or anything like that. Um, but it, like I said, it was successful, and, uh, we will start making ice this week. So, um, the scheduled reopening has always been July 22nd. We're going to publicly stick with that date, um, but keep an eye on the schedule on our website as, uh, you may surprise with a couple days early. Um, so that's what's going on over at the stadium right now. And what this, uh, board action is, is for the future project that we did bring to the public's attention during the budget process, and we've talked about it in public before, uh, which is locker room and space planning over at the stadium. Uh, the Stadium Advisory Committee will be on hand at the August work session to make a presentation to the board to explain, uh, their, their views and their outline of what this project will entail. But to summarize, it would include, uh, locker rooms that are appropriate and gender-inclusives. As you can imagine, um, most, uh, hockey teams are male-dominated, but we do have a lot of female players, so this locker room renovation would give female hockey players an adequate and appropriate space for them, and also give our figure skaters an adequate and appropriate space for them to prepare for figure skating. Um, amongst some other things that we're, um, improving, including a referee spot, uh, for them to appropriately dress and change for games as well. So, as I said, this game advisory committee will be on hand at your August work session. Um, but with that process, uh, we'd like to get an owner's representative in place. You'll also remember earlier in the year, uh, the board appointed a, uh, architect who has been working on plans, BKP of Philadelphia. Um, so they have been with us along the way. Um, the design is almost final. But we would like this owner's representative to be in place to get us over that finish line with the design. Um, what CBD can do is value engineer, they can go in and, and make sure, um, that we're getting the best bang for our buck with the design, see if there's any tweaks that can be made, be our representative when it comes time to bid and deal with contractors along with the architect. So, as I said, we would like this key piece in place, uh, before that bidding process starts. Hopefully, after the board sees the concept plan at their meeting in August, and then we'll get it out on the street and see, see what the prices come in at.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Cuthbertson. It is the expectation that we will not be, um, shutting down the ice during the locker room renovation. Is that correct?
No, no. In fact, the, the approach that has been discussed is doing it in phases. Uh, but even if we don't decide to do it in phases, and it's more advantageous to do it all at once, the ice will always be operational.
I'd like to ask a follow-up question about the renovations of the locker rooms. It's great that there's going to be, uh, greater equality between, uh, the facilities for men versus women in the stadium. What about gender-neutral, uh, facilities?
There is some space that can be converted when that is necessary. Um, and as I said, we're still finalizing the design, so, um, nothing is, is finished yet.
Can I press on that? What do you mean by, what, what is meant by "if it's necessary"?
Um, there's some spaces that can be multi-use, so if, um, if that situation occurs, it can be a gender-neutral, um, locker room.
And would that be so designated, so people would know that's available?
I believe that is in the plans.
Okay, good. Thanks so much.
Just to, just to tail end on that, uh, the Ice Ring Advisory Board has, uh, has broached that exact question. Um, and, and one of the things that has been dealt with, with the architect throughout the whole process has been kind of, uh, allowing for more multi-use, uh, of the space, um, depending on the specific user groups that are in play. Obviously, hockey has, uh, you know, one set of requirements, figure skating has another. Male hockey players have one, female hockey players have another, non-binary or, or other groups have others. And I will say that those conversations have come into play, uh, through the planning process in order to make sure that everyone is, is properly planned for.
That is wonderful to hear. Thank you so much, Commissioner Gondik.
Any other questions or comments on the stadium locker room renovation project? Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Uh, another motion for, another, uh, contract for us to consider for the Parks and Recreation Department?
Uh, Mr. President, motion to authorize the purchase of one LSI Play Booster Unit for Brookline Park from General Recreation in the amount of $143,275, under Co-Stars, number 122659.
Second.
I have a question about this purchase. Um, last year, we saw very extensive plans, uh, about how Brookline Park could be developed, and I'd like to know a little more about how this playground equipment purchase for $143,000 fits into that plan.
Um, we have, um, been consulting the plan for any improvements we're doing at Brookline Park, and at this point, we're not doing anything that would prevent us from completing the plan if proper funding came, became available. So this falls in line with what the, uh, recommendation was from the, from the, um, the, the Brookline Park Planning Committee.
And where would this playground equipment be placed, given the, um...
The, the plan had it to be placed, if you're on Arlington Road, in the far right corner, um, where the current basketball court is now, or the previous basketball court that was on Brookline. Um, we are, we're actually gonna meet this week with the, the manufacturer of this equipment and talk about the placement, because if we place it there and we place any other equipment around it, we might have to take down some trees, and we don't want to do that. So we're gonna talk to this gentleman who represents General Recreation, where we're purchasing equipment, and talk about placement. We're considering probably, possibly moving the court that we were going to put in into that space, 'cause it would fit without us having to take down the four mature, four or five mature trees that are there. So, uh, possibly moving it a little closer to Arlington, but still basically in the back of the park.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
No.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
No. Our next, uh, uh, next consideration is, um, Haverford Township Free Library, uh, change orders?
Mr. President.
Several of them, yes.
Motion to approve change order in the amount of $50,887.47 with Ricon Construction for the library renovation and expansion GC contract.
Second.
Um, we have a motion in a second. Um, any, um, questions or comments on this, or any explanation about the change order?
Yes, a couple of the, um, I, the larger ticket items in the $50,000 includes relocating the existing domestic water surface from the old bank building basement to the new aqua meter pit, which will be located in the existing parking lot. The other one was, it was discovered that there was an existing underground oil tank when the old bank building basement was excavated, and, um, about $19,000 is going to be, uh, used to remove that oil tank and the casing around it for, um, to continue the project.
Uh, thank you for that explanation. Um, any questions or comments from anybody else? Um, hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Um, we have another change order for consideration?
Motion to approve change order in the amount of $4,283.70 with Dolan Mechanical for the library renovation and expansion plumbing contract.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Um, Commissioner Forstie Grupp, um, obviously, it's not a lot of money, but it's money. Um, anything specific to address in this change order?
Um, there are two items included in this, um, in this change order. One is for an exhaust fan for the underslab exhaust system that had been previously approved. Uh, the cost was unknown at the time of the piping approval, which was needed to keep the contractor moving forward, to keep the schedule. Um, the second one is the cost associated, uh, the cost is for work associated with providing in-wall toilet carriers in lieu of the specified floor-mounted toilets that were originally called for. Um, because we are indeed renovating an old building, it was discovered there was an existing concrete beam at both the first and the second floor concrete slabs, which was in the way of the toilet location. So we had to move to the in-wall installation.
Uh, that's a detailed explanation. Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments on that? Um, hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Uh, finally, one more, uh, change order for us to consider?
Motion to approve the change order in the amount of $101,217 with AJM Electric for the library renovation and expansion electrical contract.
Second.
Well, um...
More detail?
I, I think, um, at $101,217, I think folks would like some detail on this.
Right. Um, it turns out that we have to replace the existing medium voltage swift switch with a new one due to its age and concerns over proper operation and reliability. Both the electrical contractor and PICO all agreed it should be replaced, and that is for the amount of $67,000. The other item, there are two, two more items, actually. Um, there is an item for about $21,000, which is to add electrical infrastructure to the existing parking lot. So that would mean that all of the current 17 existing, uh, spaces would be equipped with pathways to run power, so that each parking spot could have a charging station in the future, which is a good thing. Um, and it's best to add that sort of infrastructure now, um, while the, the parking lot is being lay, before the parking lot is, is laid down. Um, and then there's approximately $13,000 associated with a slight change in the layout of the sensory and adjacent tutor rooms to expand the usable space in the sensory room, and also to divide the existing tutor room into two smaller rooms, which would provide more space for individualized, um, instruction at the library.
And that, um, that has an electrical component to it?
Yes, it does.
Causes that, huh, okay.
Yeah, they needed additional light fixtures and power de, and data.
Uh, I will admit, Commissioner Forstie Grupp, that I am a little surprised that both PICO and our electrical contractor were surprised that this, um, uh, the first item that you spoke about, um, needs to replace, be replaced, and they just figured that out now. Something that...
Yeah, I, I agree with your sentiment. Uh, the, out of the three things on here, the one that I, I'm having a hard time digesting is, is that one. I, I understand that in the demo phase is where you find a lot of your, um, change order work, but we're, we're beyond the demo phase, and this is, this is something that wasn't hidden. Or at least, I'm not aware of it being able to be hidden. Is that, I mean, does, I don't know if, if anyone has any...
I don't have any other additional information about that. I would definitely defer to the construction manager on that.
So, um, I guess, eh... Here's my thought. I mean, I, 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 I think we should do these change orders. I think we should move ahead with the library, but I would like perhaps our construction manager to come and explain maybe where we are in all of these change orders. And, um, uh, we have done a number of these since the project started. Um, honestly, this one stands out, a, a little differently from all the others. Um, and so I think, um, it would benefit this board, um, and our town, um, for an explanation from our construction manager, who may reveal that this was something that did not reveal itself, and something that he finds to be, um, ordinary as opposed to extraordinary. Um, but, um, I, I would, I would suggest that we proceed with the vote, but, um, that we direct our construction manager to come before us in August and explain this one, and then maybe lay out to us where we are in the change orders and how they fit in his experience, uh, in terms of a project this size.
I, I would join in that request. Um, I would just highlight that, at this point, I'm, I'm inclined to support this change order, because my understanding is that we are still within our project contingency budget. Um, based on the, the documents that I've seen, I believe that this, though, takes us down to $350,000 left in our project contingency budget. Um, so I, I do get a little bit worried when I see the contingency dropping that low and we haven't started finishing anything. Um, so I, I would also join in that request to have the project manager come out and give an update.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
No.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, McCollum?
No.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Um, that finishes, uh, contracts and awards. Um, the next, uh, item for our consideration, uh, will be, uh, appointments. Um, we have two. We will do them, uh, individually. The first appointment is to fill an unexpired five-year term on the Parks and Recreation Board.
Mr. President, motion to appoint Melissa Raphael to fill the unexpired five-year term on the Parks and Recreation Board to expire December 31st, 2025.
Second. Uh, we have a motion in a second. We have any other nominees?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jennifer Walsh to fill the unexpired five-year term on the Parks and Recreation Board to expire December 31st, 2025.
Do we have a second?
Can I have a second at, uh...
I'll, I'll second.
Hey, please, second.
Uh, we have a motion in a second, uh, for two, um, candidates. Are there any other, uh, appointments, uh, any other nominations?
Mr. President, motion to close.
Uh, we have a motion to close. Uh, any second on that? Uh, all in favor of closing nominations? Say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Um, hearing none. Uh, motions are closed. Before us, um, are, uh, a motion to appoint, um, either, um, Ms. Walsh or Ms. Raphael to, uh, fill the unexpired five-year term on the Parks and Recreation Board to expire in December 31st, 2025. Uh, Mr. Berman, if you'd call the roll. Um, colleagues, you'll just indicate, um, one of the two candidates, or I guess, if you'd like, none of the above, but I don't expect that to happen.
Commissioner Gondik?
Uh, Melissa Raphael.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Ms. Raphael.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Melissa Raphael.
Commissioner Cavender?
Melissa Raphael.
Commissioner Quinn?
Uh, Melissa Raphael.
Commissioner Hart?
Mr. Phil.
Commissioner McCollum?
Jennifer Walsh.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Ms. Raphael.
Commissioner Holmes?
Ms. Raphael.
And, uh, could I just say something real fast?
Absolutely.
I would just like to thank the four, I believe, that applied for, for this spot, and all the P, 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 people that, uh, we interviewed for, 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 for this were, were, uh, beyond great, so that's why it's always tough when we have to make these type of a point, 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 points, the boards, and I would urge them to continue to apply. I'm sure at the end of the year, I think there is one spot that's up, so, um, just continue to apply, and I thank them for applying for the spot.
Uh, thank you for that, Commissioner Quinn. I, 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 I echo your sentiments and do appreciate, um, the people who stepped up in the middle of the year to, uh, to apply for these positions, and, um, we, uh, we enjoy embarrassment of riches here in the township of people... we, uh, we enjoy embarrassment of riches here in the township of people, um, willing to serve in various capacities, um, those people far exceed the number of positions, um, so thank you again. Um, our next, uh, motion to consider, uh, is to fill the unexpired three-year term on the Human Relations Commission. This term will expire this year, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Uh, Mr. President, I don't believe we've met the nominees, or the. Okay, are, are we, sorry?
Mr. President.
So, uh, yeah, well, thank you, Commissioner Cavender, um, Commissioner Trombetta?
We have one applicant, um, who I think is really exceptional, so I'd like to con, this board to consider appointing her.
Thank you for that, I mean, we have the motion before us, um, how, how, how long, um, was the, uh, post, uh, posted?
It, it was definitely close to a month.
I see no reason for us not to consider, uh, Commissioner Trombetta's, uh, nomination, um, so, uh, proceed, Commissioner Trombetta.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Marie Okiogrosso to fill the unexpired three-year term on the Human Relations Commission to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Do we have a second? Um, do we have any other nominee?
Just, I have a question, um, she currently serves on the Shade Tree Commission, does she need to resign from that to?
She does not.
Uh, so we, uh, yeah, we actually sought an opinion on that from our, um, solicitor, who, uh, let us know that that, uh, that resigning from that was not necessary. Any other, uh, I'm sorry, any other nominations? Anybody wish to move to close nominations?
Move to close.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion to close, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Hearing none, um, motions are closed, and for consideration is?
Marie Okiogrosso.
Uh, Marie Okiogrosso, uh, to fill the unexpired three-year term on the Human Relations Commission, um, Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondik?
Marie O, yes. I apologize.
Commissioner Trombetta, uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, uh, Forresty Grubb, sorry.
Ms. Okiogrosso.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Ms. Okiogrosso.
Commissioner Cavender?
Marie Okiogrosso.
Commissioner Quinn?
Won't even attempt, yes.
Commissioner, uh, Hart?
I'm gonna abstain, I just didn't have a chance to interview her.
Commissioner McCollum?
Maria Okiogrosso.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Marie Okiogrosso.
Commissioner Holmes?
Marie Okiogrosso. Thank you, uh, Ms. Okiogrosso, for, uh, volunteering to serve, uh, we forward to your service. Next appointment, uh, the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, uh, the sixth ward has faced an unexpected vacancy in that, uh, uh, board, and so I will be appointing someone in August, um, and, um, uh, the ninth board?
I do have a, uh, interested candidate, uh, Mr. Victor Barsky is interested. So I'd like to make nominate Victor, Mr. Victor Barsky to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board as the Ward Nine representative.
Uh, as a board nomination, your nomination is sufficient to, uh, to, um, accomplish, effectuate the appointment, so, uh, congratulations, Mr. Barsky.
Just wanna make sure Mr. Barsky isn't planning to move to Ward Nine.
He's just helping, he's just helping out.
Good, I'm glad to hear it.
Um, so, uh, the next item on our agenda is the continuation of the Citizens Forum for, uh, non-agenda items, um, uh, that does not mean you can't get up and speak about an agenda item, but this is the time where you can get up and speak about anything on your mind, um, and so, uh, as I always do, I will start to my left. Um, is there anybody on the left who would like to speak? Uh, is there anybody on my right who would like to speak? That concludes our Citizens Forum for Non-Agenda Items, um, next on the agenda is new business. Do any of my colleagues have any new business to bring before us tonight? Um, hearing none, uh, the next item on our agenda is other business, um, and, uh, Mr. Berman, if you would, uh, well, actually, I'll just, uh, go down, Commissioner Gondik?
Thank you, uh, I would just like to, uh, say thank you to the Westgate Hills Civic Association for their Fourth of July celebration. Uh, in accordance with that, I'd also like to give a, a personal thanks to the, uh, Police Department and Manoa Fire Company for coming out, uh, to support the event and participate in the parade, it was a great day, uh, and a lot of people had fun, um, so thank you for that, other than that, I don't really have a whole lot of news, uh, or things to report, I do know that the Civic Association, uh, is, uh, going to be putting together a meeting sometime in August to kind of map out their agenda for the fall and winter programs, um, so just, uh, keep an eye on their Facebook page, that's their primary way of, uh, communicating that information. And other than that, just try to stay, uh, enjoy the, enjoy the summer, and as the heat wave continues, just try to stay cool, uh, you know, please be conscientious and check on, uh, elderly neighbors, uh, and make sure that they're okay, and, uh, be careful with your, uh, your pets outside, and that's it.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Gondik, Commissioner Forresty Grubb?
Uh, I'm glad, Professor Gondik, you mentioned the heat, this is a reminder that trash will be collected tomorrow and Wednesday, starting at six A M. because of the heat. I also would like to give a big thank you to the Lanark Civic Association and the Lanark Violent Air Fire Company for hosting a wonderful neighborhood parade and it entreats at Lanark Park. I am very sorry that I missed that parade because my husband and I traveled to Germany for a family celebration and a reunion, even though we were not in the United States, several of the people we met on July fourth said happy Fourth of July. Their words showed respect to our nation and its ideals. It was and is striking to me how much folks abroad are paying attention to our country and the leadership we show. I was moved by their words, and I was proud to be an American abroad. In the eighteen eighties, my family came from Germany to the U S to make a new life. They were farmers in Iowa, and in fact, there is still a family farm in Iowa. In nineteen fifty-eight, my husband's parents came to Germany, to the U S A, to make a new life as well, and they were scientists at the University of Cincinnati. If you can believe it, they were working in the same lab in cardiac research, figuring out how mo, how to use, um, the hearts of mice as models for the human heart. Anyway, a hundred and fifty years ago, my family believed that the U S offered them the best opportunity to pursue their dreams. Sixty years ago, my husband's parents believed the exact same thing. Since its founding in seventeen seventy-six, the United States of America has been a beacon of democracy, freedom, and justice throughout the world, and today, the United States remains the same bright beacon because our fa, our country is founded on the ideal that everyone is equal under the law, and no one is above the law, no one. I am so grateful to live here in the United States, where we have a government and public institutions that have always protected our safety and well-being and preserved our rights as human beings. Going over to Germany and not being here on the Fourth of July gave me this perspective that I wouldn't have had. I hope everybody has a wonderful summer, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Forresty Grubb, uh, Commissioner McCluskey?
Um, just following up on what Commissioner Forresty Grubb said in terms of the trash pickups for the next two days, also just want to thank, heat wave's been going on for a little bit, um, and show some appreciation to our Public Works, uh, employees who, you know, are out there every day picking up trash and recycling in the heat, even if we start at six A M., um, you know, I've been out at six A M. the past couple of days, and it's, it's still pretty hot, so, uh, just appreciation for the things that, uh, everybody at the Public Works Yard does to, uh, keep our town clean and to keep it running smoothly, um, and, and the other, yeah, my, my thought being here on Fourth of July was about being, it was very hot for a lot of our neighborhood activities, um, like the parades in Merwood and Grassland and, uh, Paddock Park, and as Commissioner Gondik said, all over the rest of the township, um, and just an appreciation for the, for the number of volunteers and residents that it takes to put on, um, those events to, to give a glimpse of, um, you know, Americana to, to, to kids that live in this town, and, um, to give something, uh, for the, the neighborhood communities to come together, um, and that's all I have for today, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner McCluskey, Commissioner Cavender?
Thank you, uh, I don't have a lot either, but I did want to also thank our Public Works and Parks and Rec staff for being out, working in the heat, um, our parks look good, and we're getting all of our services, and I really, um, I want to say thank you for your hard work. In the fifth ward, we had a celebration, um, at Elwell Field that we have every year that the South Ardmore Betterment Association puts together, I would, I had the, um, opportunity to be there. I've been there almost every year since I've lived here, and it's really great to see kids who, you know, my son went to nursery school with, um, growing up and, and attending the parade, and I had a really good time. So thanks to everybody who made that such a success, um, that's all I have, I hope everyone has a, a great summer.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender, Mr. Quinn?
Well, everybody said what I was about to say, so I just want to thank, to thank everybody for, um, or thank, thank the Pub, 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 Public Works and, and everybody who's out in this heat wave, and stay, stay cool, and, and, um, I, I'm, I'm sure there'll be more heat, heat, the heat waves as, as the next, uh, as, as the months go on, but stay cool and, uh, just offer some water to, well, to anybody that need, needs it, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Quinn, Commissioner Hart?
Yes, um, and I wanted to echo Commissioner Quinn's words before about the, um, number of applicants for the Park and Rec Board, there are actually four wonderful candidates, um, it's difficult to pick one, uh, we have a, I'm very happy with our choice, but I would encourage all of them to reapply if there are other openings, uh, later this year. Um, I also wanted to comment that I appreciate the support of, uh, my colleagues who voted for the, um, Brookline Park equipment, uh, this playground equipment, this is the first step in developing, uh, the, the park, uh, that was the vision of our, um, committee put together with all input of residents, uh, the park, uh, we will be putting so, a few additional, um, items, uh, you know, changes to the park this fall, um, it will be a multi-year effort, but we're, we do have a vision, and we're gonna try to follow. I, I want to, this park serves, um, both the seventh and eighth ward, there are probably five or six thousand residents within a half a mile walking distance of the park, uh, the park is also, um, bordered by two childcare facilities, um, so the playground equipment, I, I can't think of a better way that we could have spent, spent our ARPA funds than, than buying this piece of, uh, playground equipment, so again, thank you for the support, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart, Commissioner McCollum?
Thank you, um, really, the only thing I have, other than, you know, everybody else mentioned about the trash and, uh, the Public Works and taking, taking care of others of the heat, is I'm still trying to get the Hilltop Civic Association back up and running, uh, it was, it was sad to see the fields over there at Hilltop this Fourth of July with no parade, um, we need volunteers, um, I attended that parade for many, many years as a kid, and I'd love to see that up and running next year for the children in the community, that's all I have, have a safe, uh, rest of July.
Thank you, Commissioner McCollum, uh, Commissioner Trombetta?
Mr. President, I wanted to mention that the Kelly Center is partnering with the Paddock Farm Civic Association to bring the Summer Fun Jam back to Paddock Park on July twentieth from three to nine P M. The event will feature live music, food, crafters, inflatables for the kids, and much more. Earlier today, uh, Commissioner McCluskey and I committed to participating in a duet, um, challenge to help raise funds for the Kelly Center, so if we reach the targeted amount, I'm hoping it's a really steep price, um, we agreed to sing a song at the Summer Fun Jam, so I'm not sure if we hope to see you there, but maybe we hope to see you there.
I think this board might plan, um, or, or as somebody.
We still have a lot of ARPA money left.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, that, that's definitely gonna happen, yeah, um, uh, Bravo, thank you for that news, and, um, uh, for the very brave gesture on your two parts, we'll, uh, we will look forward to that, um, uh, I, I just wanted to, um, uh, wanted to thank, uh, the South Ardmore Betterment Alliance, um, they, for their annual July Fourth event, a great deal of thought and effort, um, and volunteerism goes into, um, a very fun tradition, uh, for twenty years now, uh, I have been, um, going to that event, and, uh, for all twenty of those years, I have been judging the bike decorating contest, and for all twenty of those years, um, I secure three votes for my next election and lose hundreds, uh, in the process, um, but it is worth that, um, and it, it's really, really an enjoyable day, and July Fourth in this town, I think, is particularly enjoyable because it's, because all of our, all of our events, all of our celebrations are done, uh, really, at the local park and neighborhood level, we don't have a large, you know, unlike, uh, Memorial Day, we don't, we don't have a big township event, um, but instead count on our civic associations and our neighborhoods to do their own, to do their own thing, and, and it's, it's really a joy to be part of it and to see it, because it's so authentic, um, and, uh, I do want to thank, um, on behalf of the Police Department, um, the entire citizenry of Haverford Township, they seemed in twenty twenty-four, and I hate to jinx this chief, um, to have blown off a lot fewer fireworks than in the past, um, very few reports and incidents, uh, that the police need to, um, uh, need to, uh, investigate, and, uh, I can just say, having been home for the entire weekend, um, the, the dog never, uh, lost its mind, uh, once, and, um, that was, uh, that was a nice relief, uh, perhaps it was the heat, uh, my thanks, uh, also, to all of, um, uh, all of our staff in the township for soldiering through, especially those who work outside, um, soldiering through this heat wave, as Commissioner Gondik said and others echoed, um, now is the time to check on your elderly neighbors, um, a house can become an oven in moments if, uh, air conditioning, uh, were to fail, or if, uh, windows were to get shut, um, and, uh, these are the days to check on folks and, uh, invite them into your home if it's cooler, um, or bring them out to their porch and, uh, do something to help them, uh, keep cool during these days, um, so that, um, that's it, that concludes our June meeting, we will be back for our August, uh, work session on, August, anyone know the day? Fifth, and, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
All right, we're adjourned.